Yeah.
I better stop because we can turn the microphone in.
He is. Jacob's enjoying your oldies right this morning.
Better, better watch out if we know you've got some talent there. Maybe we'll start with the Star Spangled Banner of the meeting too.
To change it up. We're not going to open with a pledge. We're going to have Steve. I was going to ask her if we're good to go, but then I noticed our producer was on.
Yeah, he's coming in now. Good.
It's the mission of Big Walnut local schools to inspire and guide each student to his or her maximum potential. And I'd like to call this meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you wouldn't mind.
Mr. Crowell.
Here.
Mrs. Dorsh.
Here.
Mr. Fuji.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
And welcome, Mr. Ross.
All right. Item five is the minutes. It's recommended the board approve the minutes for August thirteenth and twenty, twenty twenty, regularly scheduled board meetings. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Leanna. Comments or feedback on the minutes? All right, I think we're good, Jeremy.
Mr. Fuji.
Yes.
Mrs. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Crowell.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
All right. Item number six, superintendent's report. You are not Angie Hamburg, though.
I am not. Angie, as a reminder, is out with her daughter this evening. It is volleyball senior night, and so I wish our volleyball team good luck with their mention. Certainly, these were our seniors participating in athletics, enjoying their senior nights here. I just wish them best here. Couple of things, though. Under six point one, we had first of all Jacob Ross, you just heard his name mentioned. He will be our student board representative for the high school, from the high school this year. And so welcome Jacob. He is on the student council and a senior this year at the high school. So we're excited to have you aboard and appreciate you being here for each of the meetings coming up.
Thank you.
Under a quick food service update, I just wanted to let you know that there is a federal requirement now to offer free meals to all of our students during the pandemic. If you recall back in the spring, they implemented this and then did end it starting this school year. And then they have come up with some federal funds now for this program to continue. This is to provide free meals to all students, not to students with free or reduced status. But these are the free meals until the program is exhausted with funds. And so they haven't given any kind of date, but the federal government has essentially required this and will let us know when those funds are expected to be exhausted. This is for meals only, not for a la carte items. So students are also paying for the a la carte items and any extras at the lunchtimes.
Mark, question about that. What about students who are in the VLP program? Are they able to access a meal each day?
Yes, yeah, we do have actually Rama Quiller and Linda Clampett from our food services department are taking care of those families and have messaged out to the families. So if families are in need, they do have a weekly pickup for lunches, just as we did in the spring. So certainly if there are questions about that, please contact our food services coordinator, Linda Clampett, and Rama Quiller.
Thank you.
And then last thing, under six point one, a quick update on the COVID-19 mandated reporting. This is a new requirement from our governor and the state health department, a mandate for schools to have a dashboard which reports the active confirmed cases currently in the school district. We do already have our dashboard available on our website. At the end of this time, we'll be able to report that we don't have any active cases in our, in our school district. And this will only show current confirmed cases in the district. So once a case has recovered, then it will no longer show on that dashboard. So we may be showing a number, and that number may go back to zero or may go down, and that's just showing it's not a cumulative total, it is a total current and confirmed cases that we have to report.
Does that include, like I know in the county reporting, they'll have the probables and kind of include that in the count? Is that, or is this only an actual confirmed test?
Only confirmed positive tests that we have been provided that information from our health department on or from a doctor noting that that positive test of a staff member or a student. It is not probable cases. And also from that, it is only the current cases. So it's not what you usually see with these dashboards from the county or from others is that they are the total over time of the number of cases. This is only the current confirmed cases. We want to make sure that we are dropping off those numbers once they are recovered and that we're adding numbers as they are reported to us as a district.
So if there's a, because I noticed the health department's now kind of reporting by district as well.
Correct.
So it's possible for those numbers to be different than our numbers if I'm reading everything right because of the probables as well as the fact that the health department's report isn't just students and staff in the school, it's people living in the school district, correct?
That is, that is correct. It's people living in the districts and as they report things based off of the districts, it's the number of community residents of that district, not necessarily with students and staff members.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Go, go ahead, Le.
No, 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 go ahead, Doug.
Do those numbers include, are those enrolled students therefore would include the VLP?
Yes, those are students within our virtual learning program and are attending in person. Correct.
Mark, my question was, do we have any concerns about losing privacy for whether it be staff or students based on the fact that we're breaking those out by individual buildings? I mean, is there any concern or issue with that?
Yeah, the, the reporting requirements and speaking back to VLP as well, because you would think, well, that doesn't really have an impact. So how will we know if it's an individual or not? There is part of that requirement as well is that we are sending home in writing to any classroom of student, a student or staff member that's diagnosed. And so with that, we won't be breaking out to say this is a staff member in this class or a student in this class. We are trying our best to make sure that we are protecting that, that privacy information there. It, it is, you know, we are in a small community. So certainly people may find out or may recognize if somebody's been out for a period of time, but that information cannot come from the school staff members. The only information we will be providing is essentially that there is a positive case in the building or there's a positive case in your specific classroom that, that may have created exposure for your student.
I'm sorry, one other thing popped to mind as, as you were giving that answer. So I know a lot of times, certain things that run through the state for private schools run through us. So are we responsible for reporting, for instance, Genoa Christian?
Yeah, I, I have not heard anything on that. I, I know that they are not held to some of the same requirements that the public schools are. So some of the mask requirements I've heard are not the same within some of our non-publics. And so I don't believe, I don't know of anything that we have to post regarding that information.
Okay.
Although we are, yeah, financial close group for some, some things. I don't believe that has anything to do with us as far as their reporting.
Okay, thank you.
And Mark, one other question. I know the governor came up today with the, on this state Department of Health website, their new tracking of by district, county, things like that. Is that something that we're reporting or does that go through the health department? That the health department, Delaware County General Health District is then responsible for passing that information on to the state health department? How does that work?
Yeah, that's information that they, they will get first. So we're not reporting anything to them that they are then going to be providing further. We are in constant communication with our health department. And certainly if we know of a case, we're, sometimes we'll be checking ahead of time with the, with the health department before they've even gotten a hold of that case. So we are, it is a timing piece right now. Obviously, as cases pop up, the more cases there are, the more time there might be in, in that communication happening. But we typically hear pretty quickly from our health department if there are any concerns. And again, we haven't had any cases yet to record on our dashboard, but we are hopeful that that continues to stay at that point. And certainly it is a communication effort and we, we appreciate our health department at the county level as well as Megan Trex, our district nurse, she's our point of contact with the health department.
And I did not get a chance to go back to it, but looked at it real quickly, and it did list two cases for Big Walnut. So I guess I don't know whether on that state, whether that's a cumulative number or whether there's some missing information. I just didn't get a chance to go back to that today because I was like, I checked out our dashboard and then looked at theirs and was like, we've got to disconnect here maybe. But it might be the way they're reporting.
It could be they're reporting, and this is a new report. And so it's, it's one that I think certainly there might be some things to work out with things. But I will say as of today in our districts, we have no confirmed cases that we have been aware of in the district. So again, we'll hope that stays true for quite some time. But that's all there as far as the mandates that we have now as a district. All right, under six point two, we have an agenda update by Mrs. Young, so can I turn on that mic?
Evening.
Evening.
Trying to keep it a little brief for you tonight, just a few updates. The first thing I wanted to talk about was our staggered start, which honestly seems like months ago. So it seems weird that I'm just now recording it. It seems like we've been in school for so long. But just wanted to share out, as we did it a little different this year with that staggered start, having VLP and freshmen come in on Monday and then the twenty-five percent of the alphabet the rest of the time. And that's pretty typical for what we do for kindergarten, but now doing it with everyone this year. And I can say I was in every building multiple times that first week, and I don't think I could have gotten more than twenty feet in a building without someone stopping me and advocating and saying how wonderful it is and how great it's been for students. I've heard that from parents as well. I've heard it from everyone, from counselors, teachers, parents. Even it was interesting from the stu-, uh, school counselor perspective, saying they feel is at the anxiety level and some of those issues they have with students down to the elementary level with some tiers, up to some of those anxiety issues that they see with students coming in those first few days, that they really saw none. And, and I, I heard a couple of people even mention that it seems almost cryptic, like it's so smooth, there's no issues. And I think it's really having that lesser amount of students lessons, that, that fear, that nervousness, and so they felt comfortable then going in on that first day. So everyone was over the moon about it and students and, and parents and staff. So it, it ended up working out really nicely. Last meeting, I believe there was a question, I believe this was last meeting, about how many virtual learning program students are coming into our high school in person for a period or two for those courses that aren't able to be taken virtually, either by nature of the course or, and low enrollment numbers or maybe a scheduling conflict. And I found out that we have seventeen students all at the high school, so it's about eight percent of our, our VLP high school students coming in for a course. And the last piece that we seem to be getting a lot of calls about is selection for VLP or in-person for second semester. So we're only, what, three, four weeks in, and we're getting a lot of calls about when, when we're going to have that, that selection process open up. So that will look to open up around the beginning of November and hopefully having that close around November twenty-fourth, which is right before that Thanksgiving break. So that gives us around a month for Mr. Cooper to work all his magic with staffing and trying to figure out who, if people are coming back in person, then what does that look like with staffing and teachers? And there's a ton of behind the scenes work that will need to be done. So we'll be in a tight time crunch there, but wanted to let it go long enough that families felt like they could really get a feel for what it was and what COVID-19 is doing over that, that fall time before making a decision. And Jenna Crawford, who is the VLP coordinator, will be coming to talk to you actually in the middle of that kind of enrollment, re-enrollment period on November twelfth during the morning meeting, just to share kind of how the fall has gone for the VLP, where we are, highs, lows, that kind of thing. So that will be at the November twelfth morning meeting. And that's all I have for you. Any questions?
Jenna, I do have one. Last, during our morning meeting, you talked about the crisis learning program.
Yep.
Has that been shared with families yet or?
Nope, it has not.
Okay.
And I don't envision that format honestly ever being shared with families. It's a lot of details about what teachers need to do and staff. So I don't necessarily envision that being shared with them. Honestly, the hope is we don't ever have to use it. So no, hadn't shared any of that yet, other than what was shared publicly in a board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And under six point three, our last segment, superintendent's report, just a quick construction update with Mr. Schwartz.
See if I can get the glasses, the old man glasses to work with this thing. I have a round tail. Okay, good evening. So for our new student board number, there's a packet that starts with an image like this. These are the three reports that come up for construction every month. I took the liberty on the monthly report with the pictures, just highlighted a few things. I wanted to just present to you real quick. Obviously, it's all valid information. But under site work, a lot of people ask me about this all the time. When's the landscaping going to be done? When are we going to have grass everywhere? Grass is on track to be planted and completed in areas. We can do it by the end of October. So that's what you see under there in site work and site utilities. Again, we're still moving a lot of dirt for the athletics and things like that. Obviously, not planning or doing anything around the high school. Minor reminder, trees, which were donated by U.S. Fish and Wildlife, will be planted next month or in the spring. Sorry about that. Elementary and central energy plant, the items I highlighted, you may or may not recall, we hired a commissioning agent. So Prairie Run and the central energy plant are at a point where we can start commissioning. That actually starts next Monday when there are no students in the building. So that's underway in here in September. Again, that's essentially in layman's terms, somebody kicking the tire's horse to make sure that everything's put in exactly as the engineer envisioned and it's working properly. We only bought that, again, for Prairie Run and the central energy plant. We see value, will come back to you and present a potential contract to continue that in the high school. In October, probably the biggest thing in terms of safety, I think this is huge, is we're going to move Gil Bane from the bus compound over to the central energy plant. So now we'll have, not that they weren't there all the time, but you might see them, their little gators driving around. Now they'll physically be on the site, so there are hundreds of people coming in incident should something occur, not a half mile down the road, if you will. I think that's a good thing for us. High school, I just want both of those I highlighted have to do with roofing. So again, that's the critical path to getting success for next year, getting this thing under roofed right in before the winter starts setting in. And we are still on a path to start, start that year in September and October. So maybe I'll stop there. Any questions on the monthly report, if you will? Okay. The other two documents you're very familiar with, the first one, which is a one pager, again, is Gil Bane's contingency. Not much to point out, other than the bulk of theirs have moved into the approved or signed off process. So it follows a similar process to the change orders. They have a couple there at the bottom that are still pending. I haven't talked about the one, they have one called GMP three buyout overruns, one hundred and ninety-three thousand. Again, if they have an error, where they've missed scope in a document, that was the high school, they have the right to come back and ask them if they made a mistake. Can they use their contingency? It is our dollars. They need our approval. Right now, that's still pending. They haven't gotten final pricing from their vendors to bring forward to us. Should that occur, that would come to the board, actually, for signature, just to share. And the final document is our owner contingency. And I want to go to page five because it's our resolution time, just to point out, again, there were, there's item number, there's something called a PCI, one of the columns, and there's a number two seventy-one on page five of six. Two seventy-one. There's change order forty-five. We discussed it last week. That's up for board consideration tonight. But the items in gray above it, those are the other items associated with the high school bid set versus the final reconciled set. So I talked about there were other items that have gone through the board approval processes, where they were signed on themselves and or Jeremy and or Andy. There were others. Just to share those totals and completions, there's one on another page. The total's six hundred and fifty-five thousand. We started out tracking about eight months ago, a million dollars. So not that I'm happy we're at six fifty-five, but just to share, our contingency has actually gone up slowly while we've got other things hitting it as that, as that money is freed up, if you will. So the total of all the high school reconciliation was six hundred and fifty-five thousand, just since that number doesn't appear anywhere on the sheet. I just wanted to share that total. So I'll stop there. If there's questions on either our contingency, the CMs, or again, the report.
Were you able to come up with, if this resolution passes tonight, what will be the balance?
Yes. Well, we would know. So the balance after approved, because he's already showing that I think is approved. Yeah, he's already showing it as approved in terms of the value. So it's already moved at the far right column. So based on that, if you go to the last page, six of six, there's a couple totals there. The total that we've used is one point four against that two point four million. So it's still just under a million dollars is what's unencumbered this time.
Now above that, where it says potential costs, those are estimated change orders in the future.
Those are, correct. Those are estimated scope. They haven't been executed yet. So those are potential, yep.
So if you take the five forty-seven away from the nine twenty-six.
We would be down to about a half, about four hundred thousand, yep.
A little under four hundred thousand.
Yep.
So that is the potential.
That is the potential.
Balance remain.
Correct. And if, again, I could, I could give you a list, about a third of those, we shouldn't have gone to zero, but by, we advocate to them that if there's any risk, they start off putting money on there. Because the one thing we don't want to do is not try to project out a higher risk after for ourselves. So a lot of the ones they have, again, the one I just used was a big number, million versus six hundred and fifty-five thousand. But a lot of the small ones, they start off, they believe there's an issue or they're subways, there's an issue. But we issue a bulletin for a question. They'll put five or ten grand just to cover themselves, but a lot of them have been zero every go back and start looking through the log. So that's why the, the numbers usually are a little higher in terms of what's projected versus actuals. And most of the bulletins are change orders.
Was the two seventy-four on the July document?
Two seventy-four is on the July one. It is item, it's a single line item for seven hundred and some thousand. There's here a second, I just sent that. In July, that line item was number seventy. So the PCI number seventy in July was called out as high school permit documents, reconciliation. At that point, we were carrying eight hundred and sixty-one thousand back. Couple months earlier, we were carrying the million dollars. So as they had more analysis and kept moving through, they kept dropping the number. So it was reflecting a positive, if you will. So again, we started a million in July, we were at eight sixty-one, and we actually executed, and we're at the six fifty-five now.
And where I read that, a high school GMP to permit document?
Correct.
Is, is that the permanent design document?
So what, that's, this is really the delta between the bid set or the GMP three and the permit or the final set, if you will. So some people call it the permit set. Wouldn't be call it the reconciled set. They really want it the same. So as we get the permit set back, the architect, all the final adjustments, we hand it back to the CM, the subs, and say, is there any delta between what you bid and price versus what we're giving you here as the final hundred percent set? And those are the numbers you see in front of us now.
Somebody might read that as a permit.
Correct. He should have another number.
Since that's what it says.
Comments, he's kind of listed the, the fact, yeah, here's that.
Right.
But yes, that disappears. I noticed that after last meeting. If you go to this month's report, number seventy is just one of the portions of the work that made up the six hundred and fifty-five. I'm not sure why he did that. I wasn't happy with it when I noticed it after our meeting. But he took number seven, he changed it to this high school GMP, I think masonry. And then you've got to drop to the bottom to find the rest of that number to get to the six fifty-five.
Well, I went back and found the GMP estimate to the D and D drawings, which was itemized out. And I was just a little curious why this couldn't be itemized out, or do you have it itemized out?
The only place, if you mean in terms of the entire GMP now, where it stands?
No, in terms of, it's two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. And these are the changes that caused that increase in the contract price.
You do have, within the change order itself, it's, it's page two or three, it'll say this much was for fire protection, there was zero for plumbing, this much for HVAC. So specific to the two seventy-four, there are four breakouts by subpackage, if you will, within that contractor's scope. So within the change order, and I apologize if we didn't point it out last time. So there's a zero for plumbing, the bulk of it is HVAC, there's a little bit for fire protection. And so those are the packages, if you will, that are within the two seventy-four, because it's broken up by basically the subs of Gil Bane, if you will, how they bundle it together and how those people come back to us. We do have about forty pages of backup that we'd like to see. Have to get to those subnumbers and then roll up from there.
But it just, it just seemed like a large dollar amount.
Correct.
Under no description or a minimal description.
Correct. So the actual change order we supplied last week, I guess I didn't send it out this week, on page two or three, there's actually a breakdown. It gives plumbing at zero, fire protection, I'm going off my memory now, eighteen thousand, HVAC, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. It has overhead, profit, and fee for Gil Bane to get to the two seventy-four. So it's actually either page two or three. I can, I can send that to you again if you want.
Yeah, please.
Okay. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Four and six.
Thank you very much. No wonder recognized tonight, perhaps again someday. That'll take us to the treasurer's report, Jeremy.
All right. Just wanted to, mostly just wanted to share a little bit on the financial report and, but before I do that, did want to let you know that our financial audit for the year has started up. I think everybody probably received an email. So it's that time of year. And for the most part this year, they're going to be not onsite. We did have them come out just for a couple hours this week to begin some things that we kind of talked about would probably be more efficient to do in person. But it's that time of year and we're, we're up and going again. So thus far, what they've tested, everything seems pretty good. So we'll, we'll give you further details on that in the future. But with the monthly financial report, we are, I would say for the most part, right on track. If you were able to take a look at that, the biggest place where we're off, we are about five percent off in our revenue. We are under, but again, remember that our property taxes were delayed by thirty days and still kind of, we're, we're still waiting on that final settlement. What I've heard is that it should be coming in another week or two. So hopefully by the end of September, we will, we will finally have that. And even for a historical time, that delay has seemed to delay even further in the final settlement than it normally is. But we're, cash flow wise, we are still good. We are, we are meeting everything and we do have what we need to continue with cash flow if that does not even come in September. But expenditure wise, we are also under. And again, just a reminder that the, the majority of that underage is probably in the retirement and insurance area, and that's due to that credit that we received. So we should probably, will hopefully can, continue to be the trend that will be under by about that much, or if we're, if we're fortunate, we'll, we'll continue to be under more. But all in all, pleased with where we're at right now. Any, any questions? Okay.
Thank you very much. That brings us to item nine one. It's recommended board approve the following revision of policy to policy twenty-two sixty-six, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex and district programs or activities. Could I have a motion, please?
Go move.
Thank you, Leanna. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sheri. Mark, do you want to speak to what is adjusted here?
Sure. Yeah, I believe this is now the third straight board meeting we've discussed Title Nine and policy changes that are required of districts. We did approve the policy back on August fourteenth at that, that board session that I brought to you last week, just letting you know that we will be coming with this information. When you review through the information that's in here, it looks like a lot. Again, the substantial change with this revision is the twenty-three times throughout the mention of our hearing and hearings being held. The guidance we've had now is that hearings should be taken out of K-12 unless the board wants hearings to be held. But again, the amount of time and essentially setting up a courtroom setting for this, it's more the collegiate level that is required to do this. So K-12 districts are not. And so under this, under this revision here, it would remove the hearing process, hearings being required as part of the K-12 requirements under the investigations here.
So I know, I know Doug, you had some, some questions here. One of the follow-up items for me that I did not get to this week was to sit down with you and get some more specifics on that so we can take it to the attorney to figure out, is that a work session? Is that a, a letter, an opinion, or what have you? So that's, that's a to-do for me because I know you've got some additional questions here on this one. Well, I just have concerns with the way the policy's written. I went through the, the red line items. The one that stood out to me is on page sixteen, it grants the superintendent authority to decide whether to press charges or not. authority to decide whether to press charges or not for a sexual assault. My, the largest problem I have with the policy, the way it's written, is it combines civil action with criminal action, where I don't think that this board has the prerogative to decide if a crime has been committed, whether charges are filed or not, that's a police action. And it states, uh, superintendent may decide to file charges. It should say, the superintendent shall seek police, whatever, review of the situation, only on, only on the criminal actions for assault. Because that's, the civil actions are our exposure to civil damages. And I went back and read quite a bit of the directive from Betty DeVos, and what spawned that was the lack of interest of controlling boards to pursue a resolve of the situation, which everybody's seen, the doctor at OSU, Penn State comes to mind.
So specifically, when you say controlling boards, you're talking at a post-secondary level?
No, primary, well, those are just two examples.
Right.
As, as the controlling board, it's expected of us, and anybody that works under us, to follow up on claims of disparagey between people, and whether that's a civil matter or a criminal matter. My great concern is the, on the criminal side, although I have concern on both, which eliminates most of your hearings. And I still think that it's, it's something that we need to, that all board members need to understand, which would, I did receive an email, questioning my availability for a work session in early October. Is that a topic that's gonna be brought up at that work session?
Well, potentially, and that's part of what we want to sort through to see is if, if we can get to some of your questions without necessarily having work session time on that, great. If not, then what can we do?
Well, it's just, my, my concerns for me, if I vote no, I have no exposure. My concern is, everybody on this board should be enlightened as to why the directive came down, what our exposure is to future events. If our policy, I mean, the policy's pretty well laying out descriptions for these actions, where our earlier policies maybe didn't do that. So if some, if, if there's a broken link in a civil case, you're gonna say, well, we didn't know, yeah, you did, because right here it's written down now. There's just, my concern is, there's a lot of exposure there, and it's, with all due respect, I don't think it's an answer that any administrative could give us, it's one for our council to be present and discuss with us.
This has gone through Neola and OSBA, and our attorneys have seen this policy, and they've said that this is something that, that we need to have on the books based on federal regulations.
Yeah, correct, and we do officially have it on the books as of August fourteenth, when the board did vote the policy in place, and so.
Getting rid of the hearings, part of it.
This is essentially taking what has already been approved and, and taking those hearings out, according to the revision.
Which I think aligns pretty well with your concern, trying not to become a criminal.
I will note, though.
It doesn't, if it, if, if the resolution I passed says the superintendent has the prosecutor, prosecutorial decision-making, whether the crime is gonna be charged or not, I don't think we, that power doesn't rest in this board, and I don't think we can grant it to a subservant. And if we attempt to do that, that's what you call color of law, which opens you up to liability.
So what we can do, I, I can get with you to make that more of a, kind of into a concise couple sets of questions is the concerns. And then we've got some additional legal resources we can go to, and take it from there to get that opinion, and then we can work from there. If the board isn't satisfied at that point with that intent, excuse me, keep forgetting, I got a microphone over here while I'm trying to make eye contact with Doug, sorry about that. That if the board, um, and the majority of the board feels like we need to go and, and do something additional, whether it's a work session or something else, I, I'm all game for that, so. I mean, I think we, we probably are at a point, since we've already gone here, we probably should vote tonight. And then I would think anything that would come from those discussions, we could work back to the policy if we needed to change it, if something came up from those discussions.
Well, and just to state really quick as well, concerning what you're stating on page sixteen, the superintendent may involve local law enforcement. Just to note that there is no option that was given there, sometimes they'll give us options of a may or a shall. Sometimes the may is give permission, the shall's become you have to, as we all know, but, um, that's, there wasn't a choice that was provided in there. So the current policy that has been approved has that language already in there, that's not a revision for tonight. I just want to make sure that that was known, again, that's not really an option they provided to us, we refer to you.
Now, who provided to us?
Neola. Neola, Neola and OSBA both provide, uh, districts with, uh, the policy and the interpretation from their attorneys on staff to put this into policy. So when a, when a legislation, legislative act occurs, whether it's federal or local or state, this, they essentially interpret that information, they then create the policy options based off of the interpretation of those, of the past legislation or directive, depending on what that is. But, uh, then they essentially pass it on to schools, and then we essentially have, uh, again, pay for their services to be able to give us that interpretation. Because we don't have an attorney on staff.
No, but we, that's a real good question. I would point out that the budget of the Village of Sunbury is about twenty-six million dollars a year. Our appropriations this year are seventy-five million dollars. They have their council and chambers at every meeting. I would suggest we do the same, just for this reason. In other words, I ask a question, then it's put off, because we don't have the answer. And I understand the cost involved in that, but it, it's.
So is, as you've also noted, adding staff has been an option for us in many ways, based off of, you know, what we've tried to do with our staffing plan, but I think if we were to look at adding attorneys on, onto every meeting, there would be quite a cost to turn with that. Again, that's the decision of the board, but, um, I think we do have our attorneys available any time we want to call them, and certainly we have that option.
Well, I've spoken my piece, and my rationale. And I understand that we buy a product from Neola, but their attorneys are, uh, covered, per se, with their determinations. You can ask three attorneys the same question, get three different answers. We can move on.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Jeremy.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
No.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
And Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Jeremy.
Did you forget me?
Mr. Crowe.
Absolutely no.
I apologize, sir.
All right, item ten, board members' items of interest. Jacob, we'll give you the stage first, sir.
Thank you. How are you guys tonight?
Doing well.
All right, we went through, um, a group of students got together, thought about what I would want to bring to say tonight. Just want to say, school coming back to session is going really well. Kids are doing a good job wearing their masks during the day, except when eating lunch. And are following the rules in the hallways, we have stairs that only go up and down. Girls tennis won the OCC for the first time in seventeen years. And the football team won their first game of the season for the first time since two thousand fourteen. We have had issues, um, having staggered, staggered entrance into the building. No students are allowed in until seven fifteen, and there's more parents dropping their kids off, and the buses dismiss one bus at a time. So students that drive to school are having trouble working in, getting into the parking lot. But Deputy Snyder was down at the base of the hill this week, and it, traffic flowed a lot smoother this week, so that has helped. And that is all for what we came up with this month.
Thank you very much. Sheri.
I don't have anything tonight.
All righty, Doug?
Pass.
Steve?
I've been banking my time, Brad, I'm glad you're back. First, welcome to Mr. Ross, I understand both parents are educators, I'm excited that you're here. And I also understand somehow that when student council was nominating various positions, you passed on certain positions so that you could, uh, serve as a student council rep to the board?
Yeah.
Well, welcome, thank you for that dedication.
That's pressure on us now, isn't it?
What's that?
Well, to make it worth his while, right?
Yeah, right, right, sure, exciting fireworks. Uh, he's also a Browns fan, as is his family, so that goes in his favor as well. You know, I've spent thirty-five years of my life, been really excited every first day of school, this one was obviously a lot different. Uh, was curious to see how it would play out. I really want to commend our superintendent and the leadership team here, as well as every dag-on teacher that, uh, came back. I think many kind of did so, um, you know, with decisions on their hearts, about, hey, I might have loved ones in my immediate family, in my home, that I'm making decisions about profession and family. And quite honestly, to see the numbers that Mr. Cooper reported of zero and zero relative to staff and students is very encouraging. I look at what is happening in suburbs around, uh, the Columbus area right now, and I'm very thankful for, uh, the start that we've had. I know that things are very different, uh, for instance, there is no hall decorating with homecoming. Seems to me like that was one of the first board meetings I attended last year as a potential candidate, and there was a lot of, uh, discussion around hall decoration by this board. So the fact that that's not occurring is unique. Also, uh, in addition to those types of unique circumstances, attended virtual parent-teacher conferences. I thought they were fantastic. A great opportunity to really dialogue with a lot of teachers, uh, staff did a great job. Been impressed with, uh, some of those things that Ms. Young already presented on, in terms of some of the ways that we have started school this year, relative to teacher relationships, softer openings, uh, getting kind of those SEL jitters out. I'd love to see what of those we intend to keep in a post-COVID world. But ultimately, my appreciation goes to our staff for the decisions they're making and the efforts they're putting forth with our students. In that vein, uh, it's my understanding, I saw Ron's email, seems like we lost a, a true dedicated servant on our bus staff. Really want to express my appreciation for Mr. Homan and his family. You know a good bus driver when you don't have one, meaning, uh, Mr. Gene from bus eighteen was both of my kids' driver through elementary school. The impact that he had on them as a bus driver really meant a lot, first time that the hat is passed around the holidays, and, uh, families give for the bus driver, it says a lot. And then finally, uh, want to, in addition to the COVID, what, what's the title, the COVID dashboard? The dashboard on the website, a reminder to families that there is a very strong FAQ also located there for decision-making for families, if a child is not feeling well. Think it's really important to continue to remind, um, folks what some of those protocols are. I've had a number of, um, inquiries over the last, I'll say, week, and, and kind of limbo, they're just not necessarily sure, okay, if this, then what? And, uh, while that FAQ does a great job of spelling all of that out, I think the more that we can continue to communicate that, in whatever manner we can continue to communicate that, uh, it'll be appreciative. I think there's still some, while it's going well, anxiety around, okay, well, I heard this kid went home in my kid's class, blah, blah, blah. And I recognize much of that is really health department related, but I, I think that the opportunity, uh, does exist for us to be able to try and continue to pump that out. Those are my items, thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely, Leanna?
I would just like to, I feel some of the things that Mr. Fuji said about huge thanks to superintendent, assistant superintendent, director of academic achievement, and all those teachers who got our kids back to school this fall. I've heard many comments from, um, friends and family who have children in other districts, and they didn't make the same choice as Big Walnut, and, um, lots of folks who are like, wow, that's awesome that you're getting kids back in school. And I just, for our family, you know, not knowing where all of this is gonna go, just appreciate the opportunity for our kids to get in the classroom, to make those connections with their teachers in case things have to change, and, um, just really so very, very glad that we've been able to make this happen so far for our students and our families.
Well, you guys stole all the thunder on all the thank yous. Now, I, you know, I guess the only thing I would just add to that, is the sense of patience that I'm seeing with folks as we're trying a whole bunch of stuff for the first time. And whether those are teachers and our staff members, whether it's our students, whether it's our families, um, whether it's the community. You know, I think the only way to really manage through this and, and do what we, I think we all like to do for our kids is if we continue to kind of have that level of patience and realize that, and I would hope by now that, um, you know, folks over the relationship with the district see, um, the intent and the purpose and, and what we're trying to get done. And I think I've seen a lot of patience from folks, um, of just being accepting of kind of where things are at, wanting to get better, obviously, like we all do, um, but not kind of going to blast on the first thing that they see that isn't necessarily going wrong, so I appreciate all that. And finally, I just want to also extend my condolences to the Homan family, and appreciate all of his service and time with us. And, um, thank you very much for all he's done, and, um, nothing but prayers for, for your family in this horrible time for you. That brings us to item number eleven, which is public participation. It's the meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not considered a public me, community meeting. The time for public participation during the meeting is indicated in the agenda, please refer to public participation criteria, which is attached. And we are definitely streaming online. Wayne gives a thumbs up. I don't see anybody here in person, is there anything that came in, Jeremy or Mark, for you all for public participation?
Nope, have not received anything.
All right, thank you. Brings us to item twelve one, it's recommended the board approve a resolution to approve owner change order zero four five to the construction manager at risk agreement with the Gilbain Company for the new high school with athletic improvements, and new elementary school on a contiguous site project. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve, is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Leanna. Doug, if you have anything to add?
So members of the board, I just want to start off where Mr. Crowe's question ended, and so I do have those numbers, I did send the emails a second ago, just to let you know. So again, what makes up the two hundred and seventy-four thousand and change is zero dollars for plumbing, a little over two hundred and twenty-three thousand is HVAC, which is the bulk of it. A little bit of fire protection, which is at forty thousand, forty thousand five hundred to be exact. And then there's about nine thousand in bond, insurance, and fees that Gilbain applies to any contract, it's an amendment to their contract. So those are set fees that exist on any of their contracts. So the total is two seventy-four, so again, HVAC, two hundred and twenty-three, fire, forty thousand, and then, um, I just lost it again. Yeah, just the two, plumbing zero, that's what I keep forgetting, plumbing zero. Because I just reset that document, it talks about page, if you turn to page three, you'll see all those. Cause I just reset that document and it talks about page, if you turn the page three, you'll see all those, all those numbers in front of you. So it's the same email I sent the other day. I just re-paged it again, is what I did.
Thank you, Leanna.
Sorry about that. Stumbled. Any questions? Sorry. Okay.
Any further discussion? Jeremy, go ahead, please.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yeah.
Item twelve-two. It's recommended the board approve the proposed dental vision life insurance rates for Big Walnut Local School District, extending Delta Dental through calendar year twenty-one, extending IMED rate through, uh, calendar year twenty-four, and extending Dearborn Basic Optional Life Rates through calendar, calendar year twenty-two. Could I have a motion, please?
Someone?
Thank you, Sherry. Have a second?
Second.
And Steve? Jeremy, I don't know if you wanted to speak to this at all. Your name is on it.
It is, it's always nice when I can bring to you that these are hold firm rates that we've had for numerous years. Um, and the, what's nice is the optional life, uh, we had changed that a couple of years ago and it dropped the rate. I believe that was about two years ago, so they're holding those rates firm of that, that dropped rate that we had a couple of years ago. So always nice when I can bring a no increase for various types of insurances.
Feel free to continue to do that. Anything for Jeremy on these? When you're ready.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item twelve-three. It's recommended the board approve the permanent annual appropriations for fiscal year twenty-one at fund level in accordance with section five-seven-oh-five-point-three-eight and five-seven-oh-five-point-three-nine of the ORC. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Leanna. Have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Sherry.
So this is, um, you'll recall that we did update some items last month. Those were primarily all grants just so as we started the year. We would, uh, have those appropriated. Now, it comes to that point in the year where, um, we generally always will bring what's called the permanent resul, or appropriation resolution. So that's what we're doing today. Um, because we did make those changes, uh, last month already, there are very minimal changes, uh, in this one. Uh, again, we have not done, we have not updated the five-year forecast, so it remains what, uh, has been previously. There's no change there. The, uh, really the largest amount that is being increased is for our building fund. And that is, um, increasing funds based on the GMP number five that we approved, um, a couple of months ago. And, uh, as another, this is only six thousand dollars, but a, a thank you to, uh, Wayne, our technology director, for, uh, securing some broadband connectivity Ohio grant funds where we're able to pay for, uh, some hotspots for students that are, uh, in need, as well as looking at, um, some public wifi at our Souders Building where there is, again, additional needs, uh, for students in that area. So, um, that is the other increase. If, uh, if you were seeing in the coronavirus relief fund, uh, fund, that's where those funds fall. So in total, it's an increase being requested of one million eighty-three thousand fifty-four dollars and eighty-one cents. Any questions on that? Okay. Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
And Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item twelve-four. It's recommended the board approve the proposed medical extended rates through December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-one for Big Walnut Local Schools. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I got Sherry, then Steve. Gotta be faster.
I'll work on it, sir.
While this is not as fun of a story of, uh, it not being an increase at all, uh, it still is, I would say, a good story. Um, you'll recall, over the last several years, we've, we've discussed how insurance has been a problem. And we've, we've had a lot of work. We've, a lot of hard work has been put into this. Um, a lot of, uh, partnership with our, uh, various unions in, uh, getting to the point that we're at. And, um, I'm happy to say that this year we are actually in trend with, um, what a book of business in the insurance world is. That's the first time that we have, we've been kind of in trend with what we would hope or expect to be. And it is, um, uh, in line with what we have budgeted for this year as well. So, um, happy that, uh, we're, we're seeing some of those partnerships and fruits of our labor of, uh, really trying to get us into, uh, a point where, um, the insurance is getting more under control as we can see with the rates this year. Questions?
I do just want to add a quick thank you to Jeremy for all, for helping to lead that. It's been quite a big shift to right in many ways. So thank you and appreciate all the support as well from Gallagher Benefits as we've, uh, worked with them on trying to, trying to help to get this more in line with trends. Uh, it'd be great as well to see zero percent.
We'd, we'd love to see zero percent, but, um, ha, happy this year with, uh, being in trend.
Any comments or questions for Jeremy?
Okay. Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item twelve-five. It's recommended the board approve the following transfer of funds. Transfer of six-sixty-four-ninety-four from the Harrison Street Principals Fund to the P R E Principals Fund. Similar transfer of five-thirty-eight-seventy-one, um, from the Principals Trust to the Principals Trust from Harrison Street to P R E. And finally, a transfer of two-thousand-ninety-four dollars and fifty-six cents of athletic tournament dollars to BWHS Athletics. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Leanna. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Steve.
So these are, with the opening of P R E, that is, um, the, the majority of that population has been a shift from Harrison Street Elementary, uh, now the Early Learning Center. And, uh, so what we are doing there is moving those dollars over to, um, the P R E Principals Fund and then their staff support or trust fund, uh, to be able to, uh, provide for kind of startup on, on those from their prior building. Uh, and then the transfer for the tournament, this is, um, as we hold tournaments throughout the year, um, we sometime, generally, those tournaments about pay for themselves, but, uh, we do get a little bit on those as well. And this is a transfer into the athletic fund. And these transfers are a recommendation and best practice from the, um, the Otter Estate. So we are, uh, bringing this transfer before the board to take it from the tournament fund and put that into the athletics fund.
Thank you very much.
Any, any questions?
When you're ready.
Uh, Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Twelve-six. It's recommended the board accept the following donations: twenty-five-hundred dollars to Big Walnut High School from the Sunbury VFW, a thousand dollars to District V L P from Acoustic Ceiling and Partition, and some various play items to the Big Walnut Early Learning Center from the Nissett Family. And, um, I'll spare you all the details there. All of the gator club sounds good. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Leanna. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. So thank you to everyone there for your contributions and your generosity to the district. If there's no other comments, we'll let Jeremy get at it.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
And Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Brings us to Lucky Thirteen, Human Resources Report.
Alright, I'm actually gonna stand up and walk myself over to this side of the room because I'd like to, uh, project everything up as we kind of go along so that, um, as I'm speaking, we can kind of refer to the same things here if any questions or, as I'm speaking here. Um, you do have a packet in front of you with the F T E report. This is our annual report of staffing. And so just give me a quick second to make sure we can get all set up here. It is a little bit of a different, uh, report this time around because we have added on the Early Learning Center. Um, so you're going to see some reductions, some adds quite a bit, uh, throughout this document because of the, the shifts of staff. We also have a virtual learning program that we've not had before, so you will see some reductions from some buildings as those teachers have moved over to a virtual learning program. So it'll be added there. Um, and we, we have obviously changed the number of enrollment of kids and so on just for this year. And so, looking at the report, starting on that very first page, um, the Early Learning Center, uh, you can note here, uh, again, I'll just kind of give you a quick, uh, overview of the, the colors and what everything means. If you see a highlighted yellow, and again, the key is down there at the bottom, that is an add to the district. Um, a red is a reduction from last year's staffing. Um, and then from there, you see a name in red lettering that is a new staff member, a new person, uh, to the district. It doesn't necessarily mean it's a new add unless it's highlighted yellow. So, uh, with that, you'll see here as an example, Kendall Colvin is a new preschool teacher, but she did replace someone else in that role. So it's not an added preschool teacher. It is just a new face to the district. So looking through, you'll see the class sizes currently. I will note that our preschool always starts a little under capacity and then as the year goes on, we will be adding students. I know Laura Lawrence isn't here this evening, but we did note in our first play-based assessment that we do have several students that, um, appear to, to, uh, be able to qualify for the services. And so we do look for those numbers to be going up throughout the year as they, as they do each year. You'll notice I didn't highlight each of the teachers here because I did take the preschool out of the elementary page. I'll speak to that in just a moment. So I didn't note them as reductions there, so I didn't note them as, as adds here. Um, except for the fact that we do have a point-five F T E reduction in our preschool staff because last year we did have five and a half teachers. We had five teachers and then a halftime person covering preschool and then she also covered a half-day kindergarten, uh, last year. So we do have a reduction overall from that, the preschool staff. The educational assistants are noted in these elementary documents, so you'll see reductions there. Therefore, I'm showing them as adds here. Um, so each of the educational assistants working with those preschool classrooms, uh, as well as, uh, point-two-five administrator, we have moved Nick Powell over, uh, for about a quarter of the day to the Early Learning Center to support, um, as well as a custodian for part of the day there. Um, you'll see these names here at the bottom. These are educational service center providers of OT, PT, speech, uh, adaptive PE classes. Uh, you will see their names quite a bit throughout this document, these document, uh, pages because, uh, they, they do serve our district across the board in many ways. And then at the bottom, you'll see the F T E totals for each, uh, of these areas. Uh, at the elementary level, you'll then see things get a little more complex as we look at this document. Uh, again, the class sizes are going down the left side. The enrollment totals, uh, are at the top. The enrollment total for the grade level is right here on the left side under that grade level, but the enrollment for the building is under the top of each building. Uh, you'll see a reduction at Big Walnut Elementary School, uh, kindergarten, same at G R E, a full day. Uh, what you will notice is that a lot of shifts have been made here because of that virtual learning program. And so it doesn't mean we've really lost students. We've actually, uh, just shifted students over to that virtual learning program. So as I scroll over to the right, you'll see the virtual learning program has an add there and we also have an add at P R E. So as a kindergarten staff as a whole, we haven't changed. Uh, we have taken away two from two different buildings, but we've added two full-time teachers to the other buildings. It's really just a shift of staff members. Under first grade, you'll see our, uh, teachers across there, two reductions at General Rosecrans Elementary School, uh, two adds at P R E, a reduction at, uh, Souders Elementary School, and then you will notice three adds, um, at the V L, the V L P. So our first grade is larger, uh, than what it was last year by a bit. Um, again, it's, uh, a total of about two teachers larger at this time. And I'll go through all the totals of everything here at the end. And then just looking down the list, again, I'll let you kind of read for yourself there. It's pretty self-explanatory. Uh, but just, just again, noticing reductions. We were fortunate enough that with the virtual learning program, and it was quite the puzzle uh, as we moved throughout this, uh, summer, going into the start of the year with, with our virtual learning program, with the selections of parents, uh, and then based off of those class sizes. Uh, trying to keep those class sizes a little bit lower in person, as you'll see there, is typical. Uh, typically at the elementary level, we're around twenty-four in, inside a classroom. Right now, we're averaging, we're in around eighteen or nineteen for classrooms, so it does provide a little bit more space. Um, and, uh, we, we kind of were fortunate and, and kind of creative in some of the selections and, and moves that we were able to make um, in looking at the virtual learning program, taking on those teachers from this level. Any questions from that elementary page or pages there in front of you? I do want to highlight down here on line seventy-one, the educational assistance. Uh, you will notice that we have, uh, a reduction of three and a half from Big Walnut Elementary. That is where you notice then the, all the adds for the preschool, the Early Learning Center. That's primarily where these reductions are coming from. And so the, the educational assistants that were with Big Walnut Elementary's preschool center have moved over to the Early Learning Center. So the reduction here, there, an add over there. Same holds true for General Rosecrans Elementary. I did highlight as well, staff members that are currently on leave of absence. Uh, for example, Brittany Mebbett and Jared Wompler are on leave of absence for the first semester. They are currently doing their student teaching. And so, uh, we are excited for them to potentially move into the, the teaching roles uh, or potentially be applicants that we can consider for employment, uh, at some point if they choose to apply here at Big Walnut. Um, but with that, we have had to make some shifts. Uh, we've had to, uh, make some hires here and there. You'll notice that we did not add to any. Uh, what you'll see is we had an overall reduction of three-point-seven-five F T Es um, at General Rosecrans Elementary School for this year. We do have one replacement at P R E. That is, uh, a new person there. Uh, and actually, I should not, should not have, uh, highlighted that position because that is just a, a replacement position. We just have not named that person yet. You also see our food and service staff. That's where decimals get a little bit odd uh, because our, our food service staff works a two, two and a half, three and a half hours. So when you look at that, um, and, and looking at their times, you start to get some two-digit decimals put in there. So that's, that's something to remember as we get to the totals towards the end of this report. Um, you will see there that, that there are some odd decimals, a point-of-three or a point-one-seven and, and those kind of numbers that, that's where most of those numbers originate from is because of the, the hours and the different hours that are worked from our food services staff. Our custodian staff as well is held pretty consistent. We did have to make one add, um, for Prairie Run Elementary School because of the size of that building in comparison to what, uh, Harrison Street Elementary School was in size. And we did add a, uh, part-time person, as I noted earlier in the Early Learning Center, for our custodial staff across the district. Um, I have to say, uh, you know, just very proud of the work that our custodians have done. We have asked them to continue to do more. Uh, we have put more on them and, and they have, uh, you know, really worked hard so far to start this year under the circumstances and, uh, actually just got done in a meeting with each of them with Ron McClure and, uh, going through and talking about, getting feedback from them about, you know, what kind of things they're doing to this point, questions that they had, but also making sure that we are consistent in our approach, cleaning and sanitizing our buildings. You'll also notice here then at the bottom, our, uh, reading math tutors, our supports here, we've added some reductions again because we do have some smaller, uh, building sizes. We've been able to reduce some of our tutors. But we've also put one of our tutors over to our virtual learning program to support there. As you know, our response to intervention approach and working with students in small groups is vital to, um, the success that we have had with our young learners. And, uh, so just very, uh, uh, just very proud of the work that our, our tutors have done. They are certified teachers. We do hire them through the E S C. So you'll notice here that all of the shaded gray areas are, uh, E S C employees, the paid services that you approve, um, in those budgets, uh, each year. So again, some of those names that you'll see here, working with our educational service center and, and being, uh, on site here with our kids. Moving over to the intermediate school, middle school, and high school. Little different structure here just because of the departmentalization of, of each of these buildings. You'll see our current enrollment. This is the current enrollment total of in-person and virtual learning. Uh, we do have a lot of situations where some students might be attending virtual learning, but then they might come onto campus for a class or two because we don't offer it in a virtual learning. So these numbers, uh, we, we So these numbers, we didn't break out into every little detail because you do have so many different situations depending on students and their schedules. So looking at each of the teachers there, pretty self-explanatory. We haven't made a lot of shifts as far as the teaching staff. You'll notice that there are some reductions, there's adds. But for the most part, those are just moves of teachers that may have been at the intermediate school and then they moved to the high school this year. Or maybe they were part-time at the middle school and now they're full-time at the high school. For the most part, these are just complete, just changes. The only new face that you see there, Wesley Worstick is in for a long-term teacher for the leave of absence of Abby Thomas. And then again, I believe Rob Page is in there as well as a social studies teacher and also handling Apex majority of his time. The only add, I believe, was the middle school. We did create an Apex course there. All the Apex courses are being done there. And we have Eric Myers who's moved over from the high school and doing that program to help start us that work there at the middle school. Just moving on as well, the middle school, we did have one elective. Again, those sizes, I brought that back to you a few months ago, but the global citizenship class elective that has been created with an add there. And then you will notice on the guidance of the middle school, I highlighted the number. I did not highlight the position. And that's because it was a .75 rule. Rick Kavickia was our guidance counselor last year. And his retiring as a .75 counselor, we did move that to a full-time counselor. And that was the plan at that and brought to you at that point. You'll notice a few highlights in orange, and those are current positions that we've not added somebody for yet. There's a long-term sub-position at the middle school. It's for a leave of absence. We've chosen, in this case, the intermediate school to absorb this one year only for this FTE. I do want to highlight that this year is a very different year, a very unique year from a staffing perspective. So as we get to the totals, I'll speak to that in a bit. But I, you know, will reiterate a few times here as we're speaking that I think this will look very different next year as we get all of these students back on the campus. Educational assistants again, and again, everything else there, pretty self-explanatory. Looking at our central office, our maintenance team, our mechanics, and our transportation department. You will see here, all those, we did have the one reduction, administrative position. As Jim Wilson left, our coordination of construction and innovation in the district last year is a full-time position as an administrator. Bus drivers, we have planned to add two. Jacob spoke a little while ago to some of the traffic we have had. We've been very fortunate in some ways. We have asked parents to try to bring their kids if at all possible because it does help to space out the students on the bus routes. However, it creates a different kind of problem, and that's the problem of traffic coming into the buildings. And so we've been working, huge thanks to our Sunbury Police Department, our Delaware County Sheriff's Department, and especially our SRO, Dave Snyder. They have helped us in really kind of looking at those traffic routes and kind of taking a look at those a little bit differently and trying to make some shifts. I noticed Jacob spoke already about the shift of having Deputy Snyder go down there. And that seems to have helped a bit of leading the process there at the high school. We did have two and a half mechanics last year. With the retirement of Pat O'Quinn, we have absorbed a half at the time being. The mechanics did want to start this year with the two full-time, and then we will revisit that as we move forward here. The second to last tab, the next page in there, you will now see the overall totals for the district. The 2021 school year, the current year is here at the top. You'll see the 1920 school year there underneath. And then the FTE changes going into this year. And so you also see the enrollment differences. Again, you'll see some large enrollment changes because of the redistricting for the elementary school, the loss of preschool from some of those elementaries, the addition to the early learning center. You won't see a huge change from Prairie Run Elementary School. And that's because I've taken the enrollment that was at Harrison Street and moved that over to Prairie Run. So it doesn't look like a large increase. This is actually our largest elementary at this time with the redistricting, but also the virtual learning program. As noted there in column G, you'll notice the numbers there with our elementary students. That's specifically our elementary students in the virtual learning program. Looking down below then, you'll see all the highlights. This is where our totals kind of come to, this page, everything feeds over to here, onto this page. And you'll see then the early learning center there, your total adds. Big Walnut Elementary School and GRE, we've had overall reductions of classified certified and tutor staff. Prairie Run Elementary School, you've seen overall adds from what was at Harrison Street Elementary. Souders, we see overall reductions. The virtual learning program, you see the additions. Big Walnut Intermediate School and Middle School, you see overall reductions. The high school, overall additions. And then as a district, with that district page that was noted, we do have the two reductions there, classified administrative staff. So as a total across the district, you'll see that we are down one administrator from last year. We are down the 3.03 classified staff. Again, that .03 shows up as part of that food services piece. We are up 1.75 as an overall difference for our certified teaching staff. And then we are down 6.5 total tutors across the district. Wanted to highlight that especially because that has taken a lot of work. It's taken a lot of work to get to that. It is a very, you know, I don't think there's necessarily a science to it. I think it's just trying to figure out what, you know, how things change on a daily basis, especially over the summertime. The virtual learning program has helped in some ways. Students perhaps, as an example, students with special needs that may have required an assistant with them at all times, might be taking virtual learning right now. And so what we had planned for was two teaching assistants. Right now, we're at negative three, and we've absorbed. We have not riffed anybody, we've not cut any positions or terminated any contracts with people. What we have done there is we've absorbed of the people that resigned or retired last year. And so with that, I do want to note that as the second semester comes up, that with new selections of families, we may have students with special needs that come in. Or we may have new enrollees that may require some of those teaching assistants to work with them. We may have an additional amount of enrollment that comes in mid-year. We don't know what that picture is going to look like. Class, this is what Jen alluded to a while ago by having about a month of Thanksgiving to Christmas timeframe that we will have during those workdays to really work out the staffing again. So we won't know what those selections will look like until that point. And so with that, there may be some additions that occur at that point. I will say that we had planned on, the two adds of classified staff, we're currently at negative three. We had planned on seven teaching adds, we're currently at 1.75. We had planned on remaining flat with our tutors, and we're currently at negative 6.5. And again, a lot of that is because of those students who are currently at the virtual learning program. I will also say, as you probably saw in that enrollment, we haven't quite seen the growth that we typically would see in a year. A few things have contributed to that. One being, we have a lot more students in homeschool this year that have chosen the homeschooling route. Over 60 more students that are in just homeschooling alone. We have the preschool that hasn't grown to its full potential yet at this point. We also have had several students actually, and was working with Lisa Stiles the other day as our EMIS coordinator. And she was speaking to the fact that we had a lot of students that had registered prior to the year starting, but then didn't show up for enrollment when it came to the start of the year. And so we could have, depending on when this all plays out, we could have a very large influx if this pandemic ends or when this pandemic ends, I should say. And depending on the timing of all that occurring, we do still expect to see growth. It's just a matter of, it might be on hold at this time, just as we experienced in the recession back in 2008 or 2010. So it's just a matter of time to see what's going to happen there.
So Mark, when you talk about people that started enrolling and then didn't finish it, you mean like incoming kindergarten potentially? And so people like decided, oh, I'm just gonna wait to send...
Could have, yeah, they may have registered here and they may have ended up enrolling in a private school. They may have homeschooled. They may have chosen other options. They may have chosen to, they were going to build a house, but now they were putting that on hold until things end. So they may not have chosen to move to the area in the end. Because there is a time period where they have a waiver essentially to be building a home in the district and then attending the district to start. And so that, we did see quite a few that are in that position. So we'll be interested to see what happens once everything is out of the way with the pandemic and/or a return to school for everyone across the state. These last pages here are just a quick visual for all of you. I know this has helped some board members in the past to just be able to visualize things across the district. So those are pretty self-explanatory as far as the makeup of each of the buildings and the district as a whole. Any questions?
In January, you provided this electronically. Will that be an option?
Yeah, I can certainly, I can certainly provide the overall electronic version of this.
It's fascinating, and I probably, I agree with your assessment. The 4,012 students from the previous year to the 4,012 this year, that...
That was the most amazing part of this.
Yeah, from...
To me, was how does, and Jeremy, we were speaking to it a while ago, how those numbers have come out practically exactly the same. Now, I will say, those fluctuate daily.
Right, sure.
The moment that we pulled these numbers.
Versus typical growth kind of at this point is, is what? Like if it was 4,012 last year, the previous year, I don't see that right now.
Yeah, we're typically growing, and Jeremy can confirm this, about 125 students per year is about the average overall for the years. Some years have been 150, 160, 180. Some years have been 100 more. I'd say the farther back you go, the lower those numbers were in enrollment. We slowly started to gain enrollment.
How far back would you have to go to see a flat, the exact same number one year to the recession?
I think the recession. I think around 2010 or so, 2009, and you were in the district yourself at that time. And I think we saw kind of an overall flat line of new enrollment, I should say. So the enrollment overall didn't change too much at that time. And it was a brief one year or so that there was a pause.
And so the fastest you, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be, the fastest you think these FTE numbers might change would be semester at this point? And again, that decision for you won't be until Thanksgiving time, if I understand Ms. Young correctly?
Yeah, and so what we plan to do is offering to parents that survey to go out sometime in the beginning of November to give us their selection for that second semester. And so we wanted to give that opportunity initially. You want to lock in for a whole year because that makes it a lot easier on staffing. However, we know that things have been changing rapidly with this pandemic. The hope is that we can get more and more to an in-person setting so that by November, when we get that survey out, if we do have a lot more elect to come in-person, then we will be shifting some of that virtual learning program staffing to the in-person. Essentially needing to add staffing depending on where those numbers come in and what buildings they go to, especially at the elementary level. And then likewise, if we have a lot more select virtual learning, we'll be shifting some staff to that. So it's not ideal, but I think that's where, you know, we are trying to be flexible and working with our parents as, you know, certainly things are changing on the daily at this point.
But just in terms of decision-making, you don't, nothing until November?
Right, likewise, the December timeframe. So the parents will have some time in November to make their decisions. And then that allows us the time from November through December to be able to prep the staffing and bring that to the board then for a second semester start in January.
Thank you.
And there may be no changes. Who knows how things go, and we will see where that comes in.
Mark, the enrollment numbers here, do they include students that are participating in the CCP? Or are these just in-house students?
They include students that are participating everywhere. I will point out, again, looking at the totals page with the enrollment, that district total is a number that's an interesting one for us each year. Typically, it's pretty low. It's in around those 20s or so. It's 76 right now. These are students that are extremely transient. These might be court placements that are currently now moved to a different district, but there might be a custody battle coming up that they'll be moving right back to us. That does happen. Then also are students that have elected maybe an electronic situation that's outside of the district, but then they might be back in a few weeks. Typically, those are very transient populations, so we do cover that number. Historically, we have covered that number in there. That is higher typically than what it is. It's 76 currently. That's as of a few days ago. It might be less, it might be more, but that, we do track that number quite a bit. So from the CCP standpoint, depending on where the students are, they might be attending some of their classes at the high school. So they'd be in the high school total. And just depending on where they are, they might be not in-house at all times.
Well, I came up with a 76 different from the grade level totals.
Yes. That is correct. And so most of those students are that transient population that we're tracking of, they might be in the district right now, but they've chosen to go electronic for the time being, and they might be enrolling back again tomorrow. That has been a lot higher than what we typically see. All right, any other questions? Sorry for the lengthy report. I know it's always a little bit lengthy, but I will share out to you as well that the electronic documentation piece.
Thanks, I think that's always one of the more informative snapshots we get throughout the year. It looks like we may be getting it twice in at least one form or another based on how choices are coming down the pike, so.
Yeah, if we do have second changes in the second semester, maybe something that the board would be interested in seeing. Certainly, we can make some changes there or show that if needed. I do want to thank Claire Paul in the HR office here because she is a huge help every year in doing this and really checking all those decimals and those hours and working with our treasurer's office as well to make sure everything is aligning. So thanks, thank you Claire for all of that work there. And that's the end of the FTE report. You're good, I'll go ahead and jump right into the human resources update.
Let's do it.
All right. Well, first I...
Unless you need to catch your breath.
I'm okay for the moment. But I will say, yeah, I did want to start as well and appreciate the recognition there from, during the board members items of interest there. I as well know Mr. Holman as a bus driver, bus 18, as the principal of Big Walnut Elementary School at the time that Mr. Preje's kids were coming through. And always a smile on the face, always a great guy to be able to speak with and certainly appreciate what he brought to our district and just the safety of our kids being a priority for him every single day. So we will miss him dearly and certainly wish his family the best in going through this process at this time and offer our condolences to them. So huge thanks to Gene Holman. Difficult time for many of us that have had the opportunity to work with him. Looking at the items this evening for your approval, the approval of the following contracts. And I won't read each of those, but again, I highlighted each of those people were listed in that FTE report that we just went through. 13.2, the leave of absence was noted as well in that FTE report. That is within the allowances, the same with that leave of absence under 13.3. We have two resignations up for your approval here under 13.4. Then under 13.5, it is an important note here to make. And I noticed, I did note Wesley Worstick at the high school, as well as Nikki Letterer at the elementary school of BIWI. These two are currently long-term subs, but after they have hit 60 days of employment consecutively, it is under our teacher's contract that they move to a bachelor step zero. So we do expect them to hit that date as of November 10th. So officially, they're counted as a full-time FTE teacher in that FTE report, but they really won't hit a teacher pay until we hit the 60-day mark. So just up for your approval as that is the process that they go through. Under 13.6, with our early learning center, you'll notice that we don't have an added secretary staff. We have made some shifts with our administrative staff, with our administrative assistants in the office. They have moved their location, their offices over to the early learning center. So they are supporting the early learning center with some ins and outs. But we have moved some of the duties, some of those secretary duties such as attendance, has been moved over to Jill Watson at Big Walnut Elementary School, certainly with her acceptance of such a role. But we also, in knowing that, have requested that we extend her hours, an extra half hour per day to be able to do that attendance work for the early learning center. Under 13.7, just a couple of athletic supplemental items for you. Under 13.8, just a couple revisions. Actually, one is a contract for a volunteer, and then one is the contract revision. And then 13.9, the last item here, is approval of our co-curricular supplemental contracts. I do want to recall with you that memorandum of understanding that we had approved, the board had approved for our athletics back in, I believe it was July or August. And then that was also covering the co-curricular supplementals to be incrementally paid based off of completion. So in the event that our school gets shut down and work would not be completed, that was a memorandum of understanding. was a memorandum of understanding or M O U with our teaching staff of not being paid if the work wasn't being completed. So that is just recognizing that as well here. Any questions on any of those items? Thank you.
On that, actually on that M O U, we did that for the entire school year, is that correct?
Correct.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have to necessarily flip that one seasonally as we go.
No, correct. We did, we did try to cover that all at once.
That was my recollection, but I wanted to just confirm.
You are correct.
Item 13-1, it's recommended the board approve the following contracts.
Mr. President, I'd like to move for consent agenda for 13.1 and 13.9.
Okay. There's a motion for consent on the floor from 13-1 to 13-9, with a second from Mr. Fuji. Jeremy, when you're ready.
Mrs. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Fuji.
Yes.
Mr. Crowell.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
And Mr. Ross.
Yes.
All right, number four.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to go back to the board members items of interest, if I may.
Okay.
I overlooked, I hadn't thought about it at the time, with the departure of the bus driver. I wanted to acknowledge the fact that a longtime teacher of this school district passed away Sunday, a week ago, I believe, Roy Merchant. Many people had him, but he's been retired for a few years. And I just wanted to pay tribute to the time he spent educating a lot of kids.
Excellent. I appreciate you taking that time. I know Mr. Merchant, I think, predated many of us.
Oh, yeah. Well, actually, he started his career in my senior year. I never had him, and I think he retired in early 90s or mid 90s, so.
Well, thank you for bringing that up and jumping in, and I would think we'd all share in those condolences and wishes to his family. So thank you for bringing that up, Doug. Item 14, schedule the next board meeting. Regularly scheduled meeting, October 8, 2020, 7:30 a.m., right here, and October 15, 2020, 6:30 p.m., right here as well. And I believe we still will be in streaming mode at that point. It's still available on the website for even reviewing post-meeting, so. Item 15, executive sessions, recommended the board enter executive session to continue to consider the employment appointment of a public employer official. Discuss confidential information related to negotiations with other political subdivisions regarding requests for economic development assistance. Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
One second.
Thank you, Leanna. Jeremy, when you're set.
Mr. Fuji.
Yes.
Mrs. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Crowell.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
And Mr. Ross.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all for checking in with us. We do not anticipate taking any public action coming out of executive session. So thank you very much for your time, and have a great evening.